Hello, everybody. I'm Mark Schneider, and I welcome you to today's episode 176 of Say What, where we talk about the threats to our children in the public school system, whether it comes from things like sex and gender theory, critical race theory, or replacement parenting, otherwise known as social emotional learning. You know, one of the problems that we have at Protect Our Kids is convincing parents that this threat is actually happening in their local school. Many just simply don't want to believe it. Well, to help disabuse parents that their children are secure in their local public school, I have, I'm privileged to have as our special guest, someone who knows the system well. Rosie Higera lives in Oceanside, California, which is in Southern California, a beautiful beach community there. And she has been in the school teaching business for almost a quarter century. She holds a BA in liberal studies from San Diego State University, as well as a program director's credential from the California Department of Education. And she currently leads the preschool department at a charter school in Oceanside. But Rosie is also running for trustee the Oceanside Unified School District, District 5. So Rosie, welcome to the program.
Thank you so much, Mark. I'm really happy to be here. Greetings, everyone from beautiful and sunny California. There are still sane people that live here, and we're staying to fight for our kids.
And we're so happy that you're in the fight, Rosie. Well, maybe the best place to start is, at the very beginning, what compelled you to become a teacher? Was it always in your blood? Or how did that come about?
I have two sisters that are teachers in the public school system. And actually, I started out as a little girl, always wanting to be a pediatrician. And so I started out my journey in college as a pre-med major through a series of events, needing to find a job, get out of the job that I was in. I was offered a job at a preschool. And so I started there, and I needed to take child development classes for that job. They threw me in as a two-year-old teaching assistant with really no experience. And in two weeks, I became the lead teacher. And so, as I was studying pre-med, I was needing to take child development classes, and my job kept accommodating my school schedule. And so, as it turns out, I changed my major from pre-med to nursing, and then to education. And I've been there ever since. I love kids. I've always grown up with kids. My mom threw me in as a Sunday school teacher at 12 years old. I was raised with my nephews and nieces, five of them. I'm the youngest of seven. So my life has always been around children to some extent. And so I really do love it. I love empowering parents, and supporting them, and supporting strong marriages. That is the foundation of a strong and civil society. And in every civilization that has been successful, the family has been the cornerstone. And so, to me, I find it even more important to invest in children who are our future, and in families, because they have come under tremendous attack. And so, we do need to preserve the family unit, marriage, and our children.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more. I certainly align with everything you said. I assume that most of your teaching experience has been there in the San Diego area in Oceanside. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So Rosie, I'm really curious. You've been teaching for a long time, for many decades. When, when did you first start to realize that something has changed in the public school system, that there's a problem here? Is this a recent thing? Or just how far does this go back? And when did you first become aware that there, there was a problem?
So I have three children of my own. They are, they are all young adults, and they all went through the Oceanside Public School System. I was very highly involved. I knew their teachers. I volunteered. I went on mini-fil trip. I held the staff and the administration accountable for the learning. My son just graduated in 2021 during the pandemic. And I kind of was noticing around 2020 or so, 2019, that there were a lot of pride flags everywhere. I started, they started popping up in classrooms. I started noticing the rainbow stickers around the campuses that said, you know, this is a safe space. And so I saw it creeping in in little ways like that, the LGBT clubs that they were starting to bring in. But my kids, they were part of the athlete, the Christian athlete clubs, and they would go and pray around the pole. So I was very thankful that they were able to do that in public school. And I really didn't notice the inner workings that were happening until I went to a school board meeting. And I was invited about three years ago. I had walked into a local church. They had a political activist group there. And as I walked in the front door, I was greeted by a woman. And she said, hi, I'm Julie, and I'm part of the action team here, which is a political action team, where we have the Christians that are active in civic. And she said, would you be interested in running for school board? And I just smiled. And I said, you know, actually, I've never been to a school board meeting. But if that is what God wants me to do, I said, absolutely. I want to be in the, in the center of God's will and do what he's calling me to do. And so with that, I went to one school board meeting. After she invited me, my husband and I, we sat in the back. And I was praying and asking God to show me, to reveal to me what was happening in the school systems. And one speaker after another, from teachers, parents, community members, they all spoke at the podium. And frankly, I was very shocked to hear what they had to say. I could quickly see that there was no accountability with the board or the superintendent. There was an atmosphere intimidation and bullying on the part of the superintendent toward the school board members. So I actually got up to speak. And I reminded the school board that they were appointed by God, and that they would have to answer to God one day, for the power that he had given them to be the keepers of the gate, to protect the innocence of children. And that they actually had all of the power that the voters had invested in them through their vote. And they actually had the power to fire the superintendent, and they were not using their power. I told the superintendent that she was intimidating and bullying the five school board members, and that there was a gross misbalance of power. And so I joined a group called Rebels in the Park, a local activist group, and mostly seniors. I was the youngest one there. And they're a group that goes to city council, they go to school board meetings, they're on the planning commission, a lot of different volunteer positions, essentially holding our local leaders accountable. So through them, I, I noticed a lot of things going on in the city, and city council, and things that were going on behind the scenes. And another thing that we would do as a group is we would find wonderful conservative patriots that love the Constitution, the rule of law, and we would vet them. And we'd help them to run for local office. And then we would help them campaign and get elected. And so that's kind of how I got into politics. I knew early on that there was a need for bold, courageous leaders to be a voice, an impartial voice for all of the students and all of the families in Oceanside, and that they wielded a lot of power. And I knew that my term would come up in 2024. And so, in 2022, we had helped three ladies try to get elected. I noticed that our own Republican Central Committee actually split the vote, and our city council member was not reelected. And we had Eric Joyce, who was on school board, he got elected to school board, I mean, to city council. And this was very disheartening, because we were fighting him at the school board level. And he's a globalist. He believes in imaginary borders. Those are his words. He's okay with all of the LGBT being promoted aggressively in schools. And he is, you know, feeding all the illegal immigrants that are coming into our school. And so he was able to get on city council and amass even more power. So I talked to our group, and I said, you know, this is terrible. Our own Republican Central Committee is splitting our vote and sabotaging our candidate. There are nine positions available. Why don't we run for these positions? And why don't we flood out and flush out all of these incumbents that have been there for 10 years, really not helping our party? We need to win. And we need to strategize. And so that's exactly what happened. We had, there's probably about nine people that I worked closely with, seven on my slate, that ran for Republican Central Committee, because we wanted to gut the system, and we wanted to flush out all of the rhinos and all of the infiltrators. And none of, well, one person on my slate actually did get elected. I was kind of the one that would campaign and organize all of the speaking engagement, and get everybody to show up. And one of the people on my slate, Corey Gustafson, actually got in by unanimous vote to fill Paula Whitzel's seat as the chairman of the board, the San Diego County Republicans. So I think that we were highly successful. I think only two people got reelected, and the rest are all new people that love our country, love the Constitution, that are willing to roll up their sleeves and work hard to ensure that we have great candidates that fill up the local seats. So I'm really happy with what the results were of that election. And it helped me to get my name out there and my face out there for school board, which was my ultimate goal, to get a seat at the table there.
Now, you mentioned that you first became aware that changes were happening in the public school system around the 2019 timeframe, LGBT posters, things like that, Gay Straight Alliance Clubs, groups coming onto campus. Now, we're talking about elementary schools, right? I mean, has your experience all been in elementary schools? Or is what you're talking about happening, was happening in 2019 in middle and high school as well?
So my kids were in high school at that point. They were in Al Camino High School. And that is what I saw when I went on campus there. But of course, now, since I've been working behind the scenes, going to the school board meetings for the past three years, simply trying to get the porn out of the school libraries and get the grades up, which are in the 30s and 40s, and even below for the special needs population and military kids, they haven't. And they're very adamant about keeping those racially divisive books, and the CRT books, and the porn book in the school libraries. For a long time, they wouldn't release a school book list. We finally got our hands on that. And they kept denying that any of those books existed on the school library. But then they got the whole LGBT crowd to come out against us, the students that actually went to the schools. And they had the books in hand, and they called us book banners. And so, we said, okay, you said you didn't have these books in the school libraries. And yet, here they are. You're proving our point and our argument. And so they really do not want to let go of that agenda. The superintendent is a member of the LGBT. She is very proud of that. In 2023, she was keynote speaker of Pride by the Beach, which is a huge event that is held every year in Oceanside in June, that goes down one of our main streets, which I want out of our city. She was keynote speaker. And she uses her power and her position to glorify and to elevate that, which is not right, because that is our tax dollars. And she should be professional, and there should be a high moral standard for the person that is leading over 17,000 students and staff in a multi-billion, million-dollar budget.
So Rosie, what would you say to parents who say that, well, we've, we've heard of that kids are being groomed to consider that maybe they are not the gender, that they were, quote, assigned at birth? We hear stories, we see news clips of critical race theory being taught in public schools across the nation, that, you know, are dividing kids between oppressors and oppressed, that's sort of a grievance worldview, that, you know, depending on where you line up on the intersectionality spectrum, you know, you have certain moral authority, because you're an oppressed person. We hear of this term "social emotional learning," that is basically a replacement for parenting, only with values that align more with critical theory and Marxism than with the Judeo-Christian worldview. What do you say to parents who, who sort of have this confidence that, yeah, we hear of these things, but it's not happening at my school? My school is a regular school. It's fine. It's still operating the way it did 20 years ago. It's a healthy place for my children to be?
So about a month ago, we hosted Turning Point Action. And we had Ashley come and speak. And she informed us that about 95% of people have no idea what is going on. And so that is a huge part of my job, is educating people, even as canvassing and meeting voters. I have to convince them that this is essentially happening. I have to show them the graphic pictures that are in these books, and the filth that is peddled on our kids. And even Democratic teachers that have retired, that I show, are so shocked, because they really didn't believe that was happening in their own backyard. And it is. And it's actually much worse than just the book. I thought it was just the book, and the triple X, sex education, that is very graphic, very perverted. But it, no, it's actually much worse than that. And that was things that I had discovered from a mom in Orange County. Her name is Melissa Crew. She's from Moms on the Ground. She did a public records request in San Juan Capistrano Unified School. And what she found is something that I had expected, but now I had the proof. She compiled a PowerPoint of 200 slots, 200 slides, outlining exactly what was happening in San Juan Capistrano schools. And it was shocking and disgusting. What she uncovered was a trail of emails from the LGBT center, political activists, the school board, teachers, these social emotional counselors, they were, and even legislators, and the University of Irvine Hospital. They were all working in collusion, highly organized, highly informed. And they were introducing this idea of gender ideology to minor students in the school. They were pushing it. They were peddling it. And then they were actually starting children on these gender transition surgical plans. So essentially, they were all acting as the sales arm, funneling children into the UC Irvine Pediatric Gender Hospital, where it wasn't just a name change on their school records. It wasn't just, oh, we're gonna go and we're gonna dress differently, the opposite sex. No, these were actually 110 gender surgical plans for high school, middle school, and children as young as elementary. 110. And so, this was just crazy. And what happens is they get all the political activists and the LGBT center leaders, they email the teachers and the counselors and the school students, they go on social media, and they market. And they say, come out to the school board meeting. The haters will be there. The book banners will be there. The homophobic community members will be there. And they want to out, so we want you to come and pack the school board room. And we want you to speak. And so then, when you and I go to speak up as a parent, as a constituent, as a stakeholder, there are no seats at the, at the school board meeting, and there are no speaker cards, because they have highly coordinated these meetings. And they are making it an LGBT issue, which it is not. We all love the LGBT. We love all people and all children and all families. But this has no place in this school. It should be about reading, writing, math, and the Constitution, love of your country, respect and love for your neighbors. Not all of this garbage that is so confusing to a little developing child whose mind is not even fully formed. So the only thing that stands in the way are the parents that are protesting, the parents that want a parental notification policy. So essentially, this parental notification, notification policy is the only thing that stands in their way from having full license to our kids. And so that is why Ray Bonta and Governor Newsom are fighting so hard and gaslighting school board members that are conservative and parents that are, that are speaking out. They want to take away our right to freedom. They want to censor us, and they want the public to not see what's happening. But it is a huge trans hustle. And it is a huge money scam at the expense of our children. So if they take this child, and they put them on the path of surgical transition, they will be cutting off perfectly healthy body parts for a child who, I earlier said, you know, their brains aren't even been fully formed until they're 25 years old. They don't know what they want to even have for breakfast that morning, let alone what they want to be. They will surgically start them on this path. They will mutilate them. These surgeries are highly experimental. And a lot of these surgeries are botched. So these children end up not being able to maybe function. They will definitely not be able to have a normal sexual relationship, feel pleasure, bear children. And they will be a patient, not just physically, but emotionally and mentally for the rest of their life. And they know that. So from one child, they can get hundreds of thousands of dollars. And you and I will be paying for that. And the parent insurance plans will be paying for that. If you do not affirm, and if you do not go along with that, then the school will bring in the police, they will bring in CPS, and they can take your child away from you, because you're not affirming. And so it is a big horrible setup that's already happening in Orange County. She found records from San Diego, from Crawford High, where they're taking students and they're busing them to the LGBT center in Hillcrest. And they are able to try on different gendered clothes. They're able to meet up with trans people. And we have noticed a lot of these trans people that have come out to do Drag Queen Story Hour. Many of them are pedophiles with rap sheets that are a mile high. And so this is a very, very dangerous situation that we are sending our kids into. We're essentially sending our innocent kid into the lion's den to be eaten alive. And so, it's horrible. So that has just given me fuel for my fire to run and get a seat on the board. And I definitely intend to find three other candidates to run for the other seats that will become available in two years. And we really have the chance to educate the public, go through the curriculum, get out all of the garbage, and set the kids up for success in reading, writing, math. I would love to bring back the Constitution. I would love to teach woodworking, home economics, financial literacy, skills that kids could use to go straight into the workforce, because many will not go into college. And I think colleges have been hijacked, and the university by liberals. And it's no longer teaching them an education, but it's readily indoctrinating them to be political justice warriors. And so I know about 70 patriots that I personally work with, that love this country, that are out fighting and advocating for families and just regular citizens. They have lost their, their grown children, because they've sent them to UC Berkeley, UC San Francisco, paid hundreds and thousands of dollars. And now they hate their parents. They turn around and they say, F you, I hate you, I never want to see you again. And it breaks my heart to hear these stories. And so now my mission is, pull your kids out of school. They do not need college. College is a huge scam. And also, do not vaccinate your kids, because that's another issue that's close to my heart, too, where children are getting very damaged by these experimental shots. Most, all of the shots have not, not even been tested. But that's a whole other podcast for that one.
That's a, that's a different subject altogether. But just by way of context, for viewers, in 2015, the California Legislature passed a bill known as Assembly Bill 329. It's called the California Healthy Youth Act. And it's anything but healthy, because what it requires is that a form of what they call the comprehensive sexuality education be taught in all middle schools and all high schools. And it's required for graduation. It doesn't have to be taught in elementary schools. It's discretionary there. But virtually every elementary school in the state of California has adopted some form of comprehensive sexuality in, in one form or another. The framework that describes what we're supposed to teach that was put together by the California Department of Education is over 700 pages long. In fact, we have direct evidence of this on our website, ProtectOurKids, P-O-K.org. And then later on, a little later on, critical race theory was passed into law in the name of ethnic studies. And that, and that is also required for high school graduation in the public schools. So this isn't theoretical. These curriculums are now being spread throughout the public school system. And it's not just in California. We have evidence that comprehensive sexuality education is being taught in a majority of states now across the nation. So Rosie, I'm curious, the campus culture that exists, not just in middle school and high school, but also in elementary schools, do you see it having changed over the course of the last 10 years? Does, does sort of the LGBT worldview predominate in, in the campus? Is it's, it's sort of cool now to be part of that community? And if you're not, are you sort of marginalized? Do you see any evidence of that?
Yes, absolutely. It is a cultural phenomenon that is going on right now. So I went to, about two months ago, I went to the Encinita School Board, because a dad had gone online on Instagram with his fifth grader. And he was shocked to find that his teacher had read My Shadow is Pink. Not only has she did that, but she had her class go to the kindergarten class and read the book with them and watch a video on that. And so there was a huge uproar here in North County. So my husband and I went, we went an hour before the meeting. And the meeting was already packed. There was not a seat available. All of the teachers and all of the union members had matching shirts. Eric Joyce, my city council member, he was also there to speak, because he is a teacher for the Encinita's Special Needs Kit, one of the elementary schools there. So they were all there. It was all planned to speak out against us, who were in opposition to fifth graders being sexualized and being taught to sexualized kindergartners. And it was frankly shocking. I thought that the Oceanside School were bad, but the Encinita School District is on steroids with this, because they actually organized a Pink Day, which meant they were in support of this teacher, they were in support of this ideology. And I had some of my friends, my friends, they were standing in the back of the boardroom. And these women, these Encinita mothers, just about were cussing my friends out. And my friends were in their 70s, mind you, saying, you don't belong here, you don't have a child in this school district, get the F out. I thought I was going to have to physically protect my friends. And the hostility that we were met with, because they wanted to drown out our voices, because we were fighting for the innocence of children, and fighting against the grooming of children, was shocking, shocking. But yes, it has accelerated at such a scary and aggressive pace for our kids, that what we are doing, when we allow boys to decide to play on the girls' sports team, and we are allowing boys to go into the girls' locker room, and into the bathrooms, we are setting a culture of rape for our little girls and our young ladies. And that's what I, that is my call when I speak, is I ask the men to, to rise up and be those protectors of women and young girls, because that, by allowing these genders and these people that are unstable, to go and decide to come into a business and go into whatever bathroom that they want to, offers no protection for our women and our girls. And so I encourage all of the men, even in their businesses, to rise up and say, absolutely not. We're, we're not going to cave to the 1%. And we're not going to allow all of this chaos and confusion. We have rights as American citizens, too. We should be able to go to the bathroom as a man, and not have a woman or a trans person come in and say that they're, that they belong there as well. They do not. They should have their own separate bathroom. If that's what they want, with a lock on it, that's fine. But they shouldn't impede on all of our rights as well. But yeah, so sex ed.
Now, we have the menstrual, we have the Menstrual Equity Act that requires the tampon dispensers be put in certain boys' bathrooms.
And that's ridiculous.
Just to make sure that all bases are covered. That's the law in California.
There is nowhere even to insert a tampon. So we need to confront this ridiculous ideology that is built on a house of cards. It's not built, built on science, or biology, or reality. It's not built, built on science or biology or reality. It's delusional, it's fake. When you change your sex, you are still in the cellular level. You are still what God created you to be. And you are at war with yourself and you are at war with God. And it is not loving and it is not kind to affirm a lie. And people need to stop affirming a lie. The, the lies in our country have gotten our country into a very, very dangerous place. And so people need to not go along just to get along. We need to hold true to our convictions and our values. And straight say no to all of this because it is BS and it is being pushed and shoved down our innocent kid minds and throat at our expense with our tax dollars. And it, it's really crazy. I mean, the sex education, it's triple X, it's pornographic, it's perverted. It encourages higher risk behavior that is detrimental to innocent kids. Little kids don't need to be taught about masturbation. They don't need to be taught about gay sex, anal sex. They don't need to be taught how to sex and send their naked pictures online or go on gay dating app. And that's essentially what they're being taught. They're not being taught that you should wait until you're an adult or you should wait till you're married or you should have abstinence. All of those things should be taught. These should be places of learning, but instead they're, they're community schools, community schools. And now they're offered eyeglasses, emo, social emotional counseling, food, clothes. When did the schools become a catch all, get all, you know, supermarket for a child? They're supposed to be schools of education. And all of this other stuff is just a way to receive money from the state and the federal government and have them dictate what you have to teach the kids. And so it puts the teachers also in a very, very dangerous position. I have teachers at, uh, just on Tuesday, I was at our school board meeting speaking. And I had a, a husband and wife couple that were addressing the board because their daughter on base at Santa Margarita School was sexually threatened by a male student. And this student basically said, have sex with me. And she said, no, I'm not going to. And he threatened her life. He said, I will kill you, I will shoot you. And the father was actually a volunteer at this school. And so he brought it up to the principal. What the principal and assistant principal did was disgusting. They gaslit the parents, they harassed, they bullied, they targeted and they retaliated against them. The school board and the superintendent did nothing, absolutely nothing. In fact, they rescinded the father's volunteer position on the last day of school and did not allow him to come back to school because he was uncovering and exposing one of the things that was going on in the school system. And so I'm in contact with this family and I'm encouraging them, keep coming to school board meetings, keep raising your voice. But they're afraid, they're afraid. They pulled their kids out of the school into another district because they have retaliated against them. So there's a lot of chaos that's going on in the Oceanside Schools right now. We have a school, an elementary school called Pablo Talk. It has been under construction for the last two years. On August 15th, the Board of Education thought it was in the best interest to send children into an open construction site with heavy equipment, men on the campus, it's completely torn apart. It looks like it could be a burial site. It's so torn apart, horrible, no shade structures, triple digit heat. The students were burning their bottoms on the black asphalt. It was 135 degrees, they had no water. They had trailers with toilets, but there was only two working toilets. And yeah, that, that's what the parents are dealing with right now. And they're crying at the school board meetings because their kids are traumatized. There was also later that week, there was a fire. One of the truck, utility truck hit a, a utility line, which struck a tree in a neighbor's yard, sparked a fire and they had to evacuate all of these children. They had to walk a far distance to the Women's Resource Center where a lot of homeless and druggies hang out. It's just been a disaster. So it's policy after policy, the school board has always voted five zero to the detriment of students. And in fact, just yesterday, I was at a luncheon where I was speaking and one of the school board members was there. And so I was trying very hard to be nice, trying very hard not to mention names. But I talked about the issues at our school district and how this school board is always voting five zero to the detriment of our students. And they're learning and spending money on things that they shouldn't. And um, I started talking about the trans hustle and what was happening. And so when, after I spoke, Eleanor Evans spoke. She is one of the incumbents that is up for reelection, not my seat, but another district. And she's been there about 14 years. And she got up and she tried to negate everything that I was saying and tried to say, oh, we, we're not sexualizing children, that's just not happening. And I didn't get to hear all that she was saying because about five women approached me after I spoke. One of them was a woman in her mid seventies and she whispered in my ear, she said, Rosie. She said, I was the health clerk at Al Camino High School. And I retired 20 years ago. And she said, yes, we used to send girls to the Vista Community Care Clinic for abortions.
Yeah.
And that was 20 years ago. So she affirmed everything that I've been saying, that when you send your child at 12 years old to public schools, you essentially lose your rights. They can do whatever they want to your child, take them to abortion clinic, take them to the UC Irvine Medical Center and start them on their transition surgical journey. And they don't have to tell you anything because you don't have any right to their record.
Now, in fact, as you mentioned earlier, schools now have what they call gender support plans. So if a child decides to identify with a non-biological gender, the school staff will come alongside them and put together an entire plan that by the way, is completely hidden from the parents. More and more school districts have adopted what are called parent exclusion policies, um, which is the flip side of parent notification policies. The latter being uh, requirements by school officials that when they know there's a child that's identifying with an opposite sex, they have to let the parents know. Well, these parental, parental exclusion policies do exactly the opposite. They deliberately hide from parents what's happening with the most intimate details of their children's lives. And of course, as you know, Rosie, this has become the point of litigation across the state now with the, the California government taking the side of the schools and not the parents.
Right. Because the full, the schools are heavily funded by the government and the Democratic Party and Gleason, the Trevor Project. All of them have a vested money interest. So at the bottom of all of this is money.
It's a profit motive.
At the cost and expense of our families and our children. And they do want to break up the family unit and marriage because they know that a child has a wonderful chance, success and thriving. If they grow up in a home with a loving mother and father and a secure home. They don't want that. They want a little, they want a bunch of kids that they can control that will grow up to be radical adults, that will be political activists, not knowing how to think, but they will tell them what to think and what to do. And so it's communism and we're seeing it at our school district level where they are censoring us. They've taken out K O C T cameras. They try to limit our speaking to three minutes on all the agendized items. And they also move the meetings from six o'clock to five o'clock to make it even harder for parents to come. And so it, and they're using lawfare against us. Letters from the school board attorneys from our own tax money.
Yeah.
Where they are intimidating us, bullying us and trying to silence us. So we all need to push back lovingly, but firmly and say, absolutely not. We are the parent, we are their number one supporters, we are their number one's teacher, teachers. We love them and we have their best interests in mind. And we are going to work in support of teachers, but you will teach appropriate material to my child or I will pull my child out of public school. And so that's what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to find people to run for these very, very important positions. Right now, the school boards are the battleground. That is the most important elected position and they know that. And they want their crazy liberal left lunatic to run for those positions from volunteer librarian all the way to the president. Because they know that if you have our children, you have our future.
You do. Abraham Lincoln said that the philosophy of the schoolroom in one generation will become the philosophy of the government in the next. And we're already starting to see the results of this. Um, Rosie, I wanted to ask you, what percentage of this, the administrative staff, school teachers, the, the adults responsible for teaching this material and actually running the schools, would you say is on board with the woke agenda? What, what percentage?
I would say it's a very, very small percentage.
Okay.
There are, there are conservative teachers that are Christian.
Actually.
Yeah.
So the teachers themselves are not, they don't want to go along with this, they're being forced to.
Yes, they are afraid to speak up for fear of retaliation. And they have spoken to me, there is a Christian caucus that comes to every school board meeting that meets with conservative teachers. And they are, they are in their own way pushing against this agenda. I have many staff members, um, I had the security guard at the school board meeting. She came up to me and she said, you, what you said was amazing. You were so bold and courageous. Can I give you a hug? She says, I want one of your signs. She says, I'll probably get fired because I'm actually supposed to keep the peace at the school board meeting.
Yeah.
But she said, no one likes the superintendent and they all want her out. And they want the school board members out also because they see that they are not voting in the interest of the parents and the families. And they're afraid and they're intimidated and so they're not doing their job. And so they want, they do want to help us candidates win and get a seat on the board.
So Rosie, how do you, how do you um, account for the fact that these radical school board members keep getting reelected year after year after year? What do you attribute that to? Because obviously most parents, I would think, are completely against this, this program that is completely, that is now being hidden from them actually by school officials and by state law. Why, why do we keep reelecting these people to office?
I think a lot of people don't know what's going on in schools. And a lot of people, even like me, I'm highly educated and highly involved in my kids' learning. I hadn't even been to a school board meeting, I didn't feel the need. But now that I have been there, once your eyes are open, you cannot like unsee and unhear what you've heard and you want to help, you want to do something. And so I think part of that is, you know, people are just so busy trying to pay the bills that they don't have the time to go to school board and they don't really know what's going on. If they're just watching the news, it's all the same narrative, it's the same script. And so, and it's all lies, they're not exposing the truth. So you really have to dig deep. You really got to do your investigation and go to alternative news sites and find out what's really happening and talk to other families and kind of coalesce and form a coalition together with other families and parents and fight back against this. And so um, I think a lot of it too has been apathy. And the two school board members, Eleanor Evans and my challenger, Mike Blessing, they've both been there about 14 years. They've been a lot of times unchallenged. And so they get reelected automatically because no one runs against them. And then also our Republican Central Committee was helping them. They kept endorsing them because they were saying they were Republican. So they would give them the endorsement, they would get on our voter guide. And so they were part of the problem as well. And so I told them, you need to stop endorsing these two. Their voting record clearly shows that they are liberal and all of their policies are always voting five zero. Stop endorsing them. And finally, they didn't, they endorsed me and Emily Witchman, which is great. But um, so I think a lot of people, they're not doing their homework, like the central committee. They should have been vetting these candidates. They should have been looking their voting record and then endorsing and interviewing based upon that, based upon the fact.
So Rosie, we're in, in our few remaining minutes here. Are you hopeful for the future?
I am super, super hopeful because like I said, I have people coming up to me, thanking me for being a voice for the parents and the students. And the school board absolutely hates me and that's a good thing. So I'm trying to get together with just as many people as I can, faith community pastors. Uh, because we also have a group of North County pastors who have funded these wellness centers at Al Camino High and Oceanside High. And they have no idea what's going on in these centers. And so I've had to kind of educate them on them. I was invited to their luncheon this past week. I saw all of the school board there, the D E I director. And I thought, oh my goodness, they don't need the church's money. This money could go toward the pregnancy centers, toward charter schools. And um, so I basically let them know what was happening and they weren't very happy with what I had to say. They got a little angry and they couldn't believe it was happening. They think that they're doing a good thing because the school board is lying to them. But I told them these wellness centers, they are places where they try to transition kids where they're able to have birth control and abortions and all of these counselors come in and fill their minds with things. And of course they deny all of that, that's happening. But they also won't let you go into these wellness centers because they're trying to hide what they're trying to do from the parent.
Well, Rosie, I just want to thank you for your willingness to come on the program and shed a light. Um, that's the best disinfectant for the corruption that is happening in the public schools. Obviously, you're a person who is true to her, her own word, you're running for school board. How can people find out about you? Do you have a website? Uh, how, how can people contact you if they're interested in supporting you?
Yes, my website is rosiferschools.com. And if you would like to drop me an email, that would be uh, rosiferschools@gmail.com. I'm also on Instagram and Twitter, Rosie for Schools.
Well, Rosie, thank you again for being on the program. To our viewers, hopefully this has helped shed some light on the fact that the corruption in, in our public school system is rampant. It is well known, there are people fighting against it, but they can't do it alone. Parents need to be involved, starting with being educated on the fact. Most of these school board members, as Rosie mentioned, they just get reelected out of apathy year after year. You have to be cognizant of who you're voting for and why. So please, with this upcoming election, do your homework, take the advice that's been given here today. Know what policies and people you're voting for. Uh, be aware of, of your actions and how they're going to affect others, particularly the most innocent, our nation's children. So with that, um, I want to thank you for being part of the program and we'll see you next week on our episode of Say What.